Why don't you add in the notes, like, maybe it would be more helpful to like say something along those lines of like, the, if you get the equation like this, the sigma whatever.
Yeah.
There's something along those lines of like, anything but the x term and the a term, do the sigma of that, and I think the ratio test of that to get r. Maybe that should be mentioned, because it's a bit confusing. At least, that's what I think.
Well, well, you know, no, you still need, um, you still need the x in there to do the ratio test. You still need to, because that's part of the condition, right? You need x to be part of the condition there.
No, but you take the x out in the front, so you technically only take the ratio test of like, say if it's, for example, negative one and over n factorial, then it, you know what I mean? It's like, it's just the n things, you don't take the.
We're gonna get to it, we're gonna get to it. You'll see, it's, it's pretty much the same, we're, we're pretty much saying the same thing. It's just that, uh, you know, you're still doing it with the x in there when you do the ratio test. It's just that the result of that is that it goes out, the x goes out to the front, right? You get one x in the front. You'll see, yeah.
Could you like, maybe, like, maybe not for me, but I just saw people, like, wouldn't it be a good idea to like add the fact that like,
Sure.
You just take, like, I don't, like, I'm just thinking, if, I think it would make the notes a bit more clear, like, what do you think, Adam?
Yeah, to, to add more information about exactly how you solve a problem like this, right?
Yeah, because usually, like, I find your notes, like, hands on, I find them very useful. For this one, it's a bit like, yeah, the last time I didn't see it, but maybe it would be, or it would be a bit more useful to add something along those lines of like,
How do you actually do it?
You take the x thing out, and you take the x thing out, and you're basically just performing the ratio test on like the things with the n in it. So whatever your n thing is, you do the ratio test on that, and then you just like multiply by that. So maybe that'd be, be useful to.
Well, but, but the thing is, is that you can say that, but it's also, you, you're, you're really doing the ratio test on the whole thing with the x in there, with the x in there too.
No, I know, I know that, Adam, but just for like clarity.
Okay, okay, yeah.
You know what I mean?
I understand, I understand. I'll add something there, I'll add something in there and.
You don't have to, I'll just.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Are we really arguing about semantics?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we, we should get.
Jesus.
We should get going, we should get going into it. Um, so.
Just suggesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so let's start. I mean, this is, uh, you know, study session number eight. We're here for a 6.1, which is, uh, just power series, the first section of power series and functions. So, uh, like I said, you can go to homework help and you can find this note here. Uh, so I have everything written up until and including 6.3, so today we're looking at 6.1, power series and functions. Um, it has all the information you kind of need to know. I'm not gonna be following it exactly, but it'll just be here. I'll be making reference to it as I go.
Are you recording?
I am recording, yes. Thank you for checking, though. And can someone say something quickly so I can make sure that the?
Ah!
Ah, yes, we're good. Good. It should be in the recording. My headphones are still doing something weird, but like, I'm not gonna mess with anymore. I can't, I can hear everybody and it looks like everything's in the recording, so.
You had a whole, like, encore right there. You're just like.
Yeah.
Those levels, they're like, ah, I was like, ooh, let's go.
Okay, so let's start here. Well, what's a power function, right? This whole section is about power series, power series, and functions, right? So I'm gonna first make a little introduction about power series and functions. Um, and then we're gonna go through a little list of everything that we need for, to, to study in the, in this section. Okay, so a power series is, well, okay, a series is an infinite sum, or a partial series is, is a part of an infinite sum. And then a power series is referring to power functions, right? So we have power functions of x. So if I were to want, like, if I were to write this polynomial, right? If I were to write f of x equals, and I just, just thought of this demonstration before I started, so I don't know if it'll work, but let's see. So if I were to just think about this polynomial, just x squared plus x plus one, it's a sum, right? I could write it as x squared plus x plus x to the power zero, x power one there, right? Essentially, we can write this as the, the f of x is equal to the sum, n goes from zero to two of, um, well, it would be Cn, well, okay, I'll call it, I'll call it just x to the n, right? X to the n. So I now have a series that represents this function here, right? Uh, it could be more complicated, like, let's say, for example, if this was, um, if this was, oh, Siri turned on, because I said series. That's probably gonna happen a lot, okay? Um, so let's say, for example, I had two, uh, four, and, uh, six here. Hopefully, I can make a thing in the front here. And then we can say this is Cn x to the n. Where Cn, right, Cn has terms two, four, six, right? Cn has terms two, four, six, and it could go forever, whatever, but the zeroth term is two, the first term is four, the third term is six. So in general, we have a polynomial here, right, written as a sum. Now, what if I wanted to make a different kind of polynomial? What if I wanted to make an infinitely long polynomial? If I said f of x was, um, you know, two x to the zero plus four x, uh, to the power one, plus six x squared, plus eight x to the three, da, da, da. How could I represent this function, right? This is a function, it's a polynomial function. It goes infinitely long, but I can still write it nicely as a series. I can still write f of x equals the sum, uh, n goes from zero to infinity of Cn x to the n, uh, yeah, x to the n, right? And now our Cn has to be defined a little bit nicer, so, uh, it's gonna be the zeroth term is two, so it's a zero, just x plus two? No, two x. No, two x, no, x, hold on, two, four, zeroth term is two, first term is four. Uh, it goes the, is two, zero, two, so two x plus two, yeah, two x plus two, or two n plus two, actually. Two n plus two. So for the zeroth term, it would be two, for the first term, it would be four, for the third term, it would be, um, sorry, for the, the second term, it would be, uh, four plus, yeah, okay, we're good, that's correct. So Cn is two n plus two, and so in general, we can write that function, that infinite function, f of x, as the sum, uh, n goes from zero to infinity of two n plus two times x to the n. And so we have a very unique kind of function that's written as an infinite sum, and this is what a power series is, right? This is a power series, right? Uh, namely, this is a power series centered at zero, so we call it centered at zero. And what that means is, is that, um, it will converge definitely for zero, right? Because if I set x equal to zero, right, it's a function of x, so if I set x equal to zero, then it would be, um, well, zero to the power zero is, well, zero to the power zero is actually one. Hold on. It's not one, but for power series, you call it one. So I guess I would have to, well, I guess it converges, that's okay, never mind. The point is, it's just to converge, so, cause zero, two times, yeah, anyways, it would converge definitely for zero, right? Because we're adding infinitely many zeros, so that's okay, but for any other number, right? If I, if I said like two to the n here, uh, well, we don't know, we don't know if it would converge or diverge, for sure, right? Uh, but to, to say it's centered at zero, right? That means that the term that is being raised to the power n, um, is zero at this value that it's centered at. So if it's just x to the n, for example, if I had x plus two to the n in there, well, this would be centered at negative two, because if I put negative two in here, this quantity becomes zero. Okay, so that's the general startup of what a power function is, right? It's as if we wanted to make a polynomial, we could take a finite polynomial and turn that into a sum. We can also take an infinite polynomial, which has some sort of rule for its coefficients, right? And turn that into a sum as well. In fact, an infinite series, which is what we're, which is called a power series, which is what we're studying. So I'll put the general definition of a power series here, right? So the, in general, a power series centered at a is written like this, so the power series, um, which goes from n from zero to infinity of Cn x minus a to the n, right? Where each Cn is a real number and also a is a real number, right? A and Cn are real numbers. So this is just a general power series here. So now, if we put in certain values of x, it'll converge, and if we put in certain values of x, it won't converge, right? It depends on the exact, um, uh, the value we put in. So maybe let's start with an example, and to be able to tell like when a power series will converge or not. And I know there's, I can go through the three, there's three ways it'll converge or diverge, but maybe let's just go right into an example, and then we can see what we get. So let's start with here. Uh, this is our first example, uh, again, from Horowitz's lectures. So we wanna see, when does this power series converge? For what values of x does this power series converge? Of the infinite sum, so it's at zero, of x to the n over n factorial. When does this converge or diverge? So in general, you wanna start this off with, um, doing the ratio test, um, because it's the, one of the tests that'll get you the clearest answer and the most useful answer. So we start with the ratio test for this one. Uh, it'll be the limit as n goes to infinity of, so x plus one, so x to the n plus one, I mean, over n plus one factorial times n, oops, that was, oh, no, that's right, n factorial over x to the n. Uh, yes, this is an absolute value. Okay, so we can compute this limit. Um, what cancels? Well, this cancels with this, so it's just x to the power one, which we can take out to the front, right? Because the limit is in terms of n, so it's just the absolute value of x times the limit, oops, times the limit as n goes to infinity of, um, well, this is, this was moved out to the front. We just have n factorial over n plus one factorial. Uh, but n plus one factorial, remember, you can write that as n plus one times n factorial, drop the brackets, n factorial. So now the n factorials will cancel, and we're just left with the absolute value of x times the limit as n goes to infinity of one over n plus one, right? So this limit is zero as n goes to infinity, so our result from the ratio test is zero. And remember, if you get zero as a result from the ratio test, that means it converges absolutely, I think, or just converges, whatever. Converges. And what this means is that there's no, doesn't matter what value of x you put in here, the result of the limit test, of the ratio test, I mean, will always be zero, which means that this limit, I mean, this power of series, our series, oops, series, converges for all x. Okay? And we say, I was just, I, I won't mention the radius of convergence just yet, but I'll just say that the interval of convergence is negative infinity to infinity. So any value of x in that interval, uh, I should say for all x, e i, and i is that. E i, and i is, is the real line, right, the whole real line. So that's a little bit of a confusing way of saying it, but hopefully that makes sense. For, for all x in its interval of convergence, and its interval of convergence is that. This, this statement is true for every power series, and this statement is true for this power series. Right? Okay. So there's the first way that a power series can converge or diverge. Now, there's two other ways that a power series can converge or diverge. So let's take a look at the next one. Yeah, so let's look at this next one here. We have, uh, determine for what values of x does the following power series converge? So it is, the, the power series is the sum, n goes from zero to infinity of n factorial x to the n. So very similar to the last one, except now we have, um, the fact that, is it gonna be very similar? Yes, it is. So now we had, just have the fact that, uh, the n factorial is not in the denominator anymore. So what values of x do I put in here to make this converge or diverge? Well, to converge is what we're looking for. So again, I'll start with the ratio test. So that's the limit as n goes to infinity of, so n plus one, I'm gonna right away write it as n plus one times n factorial, x to the n plus one, um, over n factorial x to the n. So what cancels? N factorial cancels, x to the n cancels, we just have an x to the power one left here. Uh, this is an absolute value, so the absolute value of x comes out, so it's gonna be the absolute value of x times the limit as n goes to infinity of n plus one. Now, this limit is infinity, right? This is the absolute value of x times infinity. But there is a value that this converges for, and we say that it converges for x equals zero. If x is zero, then it's zero times infinity, which, um, we can't always just say that that's zero, but for the sake of this, we can just say that that's zero. Yeah, we can just say that that's zero, because it's, we're taking the limit as this goes to infinity. This is always, for any value, for any finite value of this, um, of this limit, it, this is gonna be zero, because you're gonna be multiplying by zero, right? So as you go to infinity, it's always being multiplied by zero. So we say that the limit is equal to zero. Uh, the, sorry, the, the, the limit is equal to infinity, and so it's only zero if this x value is zero. So what that means is that the power series converges for, um, uh, x equals zero and diverges for x not equal to zero, because if x isn't zero, then this limit is infinity, and if you get infinity out of the ratio test, uh, what happens? I forget, there's something that happens. If you get infinity out of the ratio test, then you diverge, that's it. So there's the second way, yeah?
Sorry, was, so will a power series only converge to zero?
Uh, what it converges to is different, um, but it converges if x is zero. It does converge if x is zero, right? So if x is zero, zero to the, okay, doesn't quite.
Zero times infinity, a Lopatole rule?
It is, it is, and for some reason.
So like, I don't know exactly what this would be then.
Yeah, like it was saying, like, for every, yeah, even this.
This is, it can't be, because it's just infinity. It's the limit of ju, only infinity, x is not involved.
You got it, you got it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's not a Lopatole rule, it's literally just.
It's just infinity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's like, it's infinity, but it's every finite number.
Yeah, and I'm, but I'm choosing x to be zero here. X doesn't have to be zero. I'm saying x is zero, that's the only time that this would converge.
So this is, is zero, yeah.
For x equals zero.
It's not in the limit, that's why, I guess.
Yeah, well, my reasoning, I mean, when Horowitz did, he kinda just skipped over the fact that we're doing, we say, we're saying zero times infinity is zero. Um, probably because my reasoning for it is that for, for, if you, like, if you take this limit, if you choose any value of n that you stop at, right? Obviously, we're taking the limit, so we're not stopping, but if you were to stop at any value, it would be zero, because you're multiplying zero times this, right? So it doesn't really matter. If I'm choosing this to be zero, like, if I were to graph this on Desmos.
So the radius would be zero too?
Well, yeah, I'll get to radius in a second. I mean, I didn't mention radius just yet, but yeah, yeah, radius would be, radius would be, radius would be zero, yeah. Um, if I did zero times x plus one, it's always zero. For any finite sum, it's zero. And so if I take the limit as x goes to infinity, um, so it's, it's kind of confusing to call it x here, because I, I can't put n, though, because it doesn't understand when I put n, it just thinks that's a constant. So this is x, this is n, so as n goes to infinity, right, we're always at zero, so the limit is zero.
Whoa, oh, it's gone.
You wanna see it? Oops. Here we are, there we are.
Um, Adam's, as Adam's screen goes to infinity.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the second way that it can converge or diverge, right? So the second way, uh, the interval of convergence, I will mention right now, and the interval convergence is zero to zero inclusive, so. Zero to zero inclusive, right, we include zero and zero. Okay. So that's the only, and that's the only number that this would converge for, that's the interval of convergence. Okay, and now the last, yeah?
You said, second way, something can converge or diverge, as in, like, different from the first one?
Yeah, well, could, because the first one, it was infinity, it was neg, negative infinity to infinity, it was, there was, for any value of x, this series, uh, this power series converges.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But for this one, it's only when x is zero, right?
It converges.
It converges.
Yeah, yeah, it converges, yeah.
And then the other possibility is what we see next, which is this example here. So the next example is, um, the sum, n goes from z, uh, goes from one to infinity of x plus one to the n over n five to the n. So the question is, find the interval of convergence for what, what interval of x values, uh, makes this series converge? So start with the ratio test?
I was gonna say, if this is one of those where we actually have to use the root, but I guess not.
Uh, uh, you'd, you'd have to evaluate n to the one over n, if you did that, because this would end up being one over n. Uh, if you did the root test, and that's, uh, that's indeterminate, right? So, uh, we, yeah, so limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute value of, okay, well, x plus one to the n plus one over n plus one, times five to the n plus one, times, uh, n five to the n over x plus one to the n. Okay, this is a, it's a complicated one, so let's see it. Um, close that. Well, what cancels, first of all? So x plus one to the n and x plus one to the n cancels, we just have an x plus one on the top. Uh, five to the n and five to the n cancels, okay, this is actually not that complicated, we're good. So this will end up being, okay, I'll, I'll rewrite it one time, uh, without taking anything out yet. So limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute value of x plus one, um, over five, over five, uh, times n over n plus one, right? N over n plus one, let me just make sure that I'm doing the right thing, plus one, yep, we're good. Okay, so I can take that x plus one over five out of the limit, because it's not affected by the limit, because the limit is in terms of n. So it's just x plus one, the absolute value of x plus one, over five, times the limit as n goes to infinity of n over n plus one. They're both positive, so we don't have to worry about absolute value anymore. So this limit is one, so we get, the result of the ratio test is x plus one. The absolute value of x plus one over five. Now, what are the conditions of convergence for the ratio test? We didn't get zero, and we didn't get infinity, so there's actually a value we got out of this. And the conditions for the ratio test, for convergence, is that our value has to be between zero and one. So this value here has to be between zero and one, okay? Well, we know, we know it's greater than zero, right? We know it's not negative, because this is a positive value, that's a positive value. So we don't actually have to worry about the fact that it's greater than zero, it is greater than zero, without a doubt. What we do have to worry about is that this is less than one. That's the only condition that we need, right? Let me just make sure I'm doing that right. Yeah, it has to be less than one, right? That value that we got here, x, the absolute value of x plus one over five has to be less than one. Okay, so to figure out what our, um, interval of convergence, or like, what, what values of x make this true, is, well, we just solve for x, so it's gonna be the absolute value of x plus one is, uh, less than five. So the absolute values mean equivalently, equivalently, negative five greater than x plus one, five, right? Then that's the equivalent, and then just subtract, sorry, just subtract one from everything, so negative six, x, um, uh, four. Okay, so for any value of x between negative four and six, non-inclusive of either side, right? Well, we don't actually know yet, but most likely not inclusive of either side, then we, um, uh, that'll converge, this power series up here will converge. But what we do have to check is at negative six and at four, does the power series converge or diverge, right? So, um, we gotta just try that out. So we gotta just say, for x equals negative six, take our power series, sub in negative six, so it's going to be the sum, n goes from one to infinity of, it was x plus one, right? X plus one, so negative six plus one to the n over n five to the n. Does this series converge or diverge? So equivalently, we can say, well, that middle bit there is the sum, n goes from one to infinity of, okay, so that's negative five, which is negative one to the n, times five to the n, over n five to the n. This cancels, and we're just left with the alternating harmonic series, which converges, right? I forget now, yeah, I think it converges. So we're left with the alternating harmonic series, n equals one, which is minus one to the n, one over n. Uh, so again, this is alternating harmonic series, um, which converges. What that tells us is that actually negative six is included, because if x is negative six, this still converges, this, the whole series still converges. Let's check for, uh, x equals four. So for x equals four, right, what, what, what do we do? Well, same thing, we plug in four for x here, so it's gonna be four plus one, it's gonna be five, so let's, let me write it out all of it, though. So the sum, n goes from one to infinity of, uh, well, it's gonna be four plus one to the n over n five to the n. Well, this and this cancel, so it, cause that's five to the n, and that's five to the n on the denominator. So this is just n equals one, uh, to infinity, the sum, n equals one to infinity of one over n, which is just the harmonic series, which diverges. And in, so because of that, four is not included in our interval. Therefore, our interval of convergence is negative six to four, including negative six, and thus the end. So for any value in that range, this will converge. Otherwise, diverge.
Well, so when you have an absolute value, you just do like, absolute value smarter than one, and then you kind of start to split it into two things, if that makes sense?
Yeah, you, you take this, this quantity that you get out of the root, uh, ratio test has to be less than one, that's all you care about, that it's less than one.
Yeah, and then you, and then you kind of do, then you kind of get rid of that sort of rising, uh, split it, split it into two things, right?
Yeah, I, this was the step here, to get rid of the absolute values.
And, uh, harmonic series, when like, do you just have to memorize that, that like, when it's like alternating, it converges, and when it's not, it diverges?
You could do it by the alternating series test as well, you could show it by the alternating series test, that it, uh, this converges. Because alternating series tests is you take the b n's, does that decrease? Yep. Does the limit as n goes to infinity equal zero? Yes, therefore, this converges. That's the alternating. What was it, sorry, yeah?
So it doesn't have to like memorize that, cause like one over n, like, you just have to memorize that, don't you?
Or, or, or like for, for one over n here, this one?
Yeah.
Um, how do you show it? Well, you can show it with the integral test.
Oh, but like for, I was about to say, like, for, uh, 6.1, for example, you don't have to show it, like, you just have to say, it's that, so it converges, right?
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to show it, if, like, if you just memorize it, then you can just show, diverges, that it converges, there you go, that's enough.
You just have to show everything else, but not the, cause we.
Not that part, not, that's not what we're being tested on, right? So we just have to know. I mean, if it's a more complicated thing you get out of it, then you'll just have to do more steps to be able to tell, right?
Yeah, but if it's just like something as simple, like.
Exactly, then it's okay, right?
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so there we go, we saw three different ways that a power series can converge, right? We have the first way, which is that it converges regardless of the value of x, like this first series here. We saw another way, which was that it converges for only one value of x, this, like, this power series here. And like this final one here, well, it actually converges over some interval, right? It converges over some interval. So let's take a look here, let's take a look at the actual function here. What was this function centered at? Remember, in general, a power function is the sum, n goes from zero or one or whatever, um, depends on the situation exactly, uh, of, uh, Cn times x minus a to the n, that's in general, right? So in this particular case, Cn is one over n, uh, n five to the n, and a is negative one. So we're centered at negative one, right? Our center is negative one, which, which is a, which is always what a is. Okay, so the reason that's an interesting thing to think about is because if you were to draw a number line here, if you were to draw a number line, right? And we had, okay, so zero, negative one, negative two, negative three, negative four, negative five, negative six. Uh, so that would be zero, one, two, three, four, five, okay, give me one second. Uh, five, four, three, two, one, zero. Negative one, negative two, negative three, negative four, negative five, negative six, okay. We are centered at negative one. We, we said that the interval of conver, of convergence is negative six to four, right? Hold on, are we centered, wait?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're good, okay. So we're centered at, at one, and we said the interval of convergence was from negative six to four. You know, it doesn't really particularly matter, not including negative six, but, I mean, sorry, not, not including four. You know, it doesn't really particularly matter, not including negative six, but, I mean, sorry, not, not including four. Uh, but in this particular moment, it, it doesn't matter. So what we can kind of see is that there is an equal space to ea- either side here, right? That the function converges to, right? In, in other words, you know, you go in, you go five in each, either direction, right? You go minus five, you go plus five, you'll, you'll be converging in that range. Possibly not the endpoints, the endpoints you don't know for sure. You call the radius of convergence, you know, the space between those endpoints, but you don't know for sure if that includes the endpoints. Right? Um, so we say that this is the radius of convergence. Of convergence. Right? And the radius of convergence in this particular case is five. So how far can you go in the number line in either direction and converge? Possibly including the endpoints, possibly not. So let's go back to the other examples, what's the radius of convergence for those ones? So for this one, radius of convergence is five. This one, um, here, well, the radius of convergence is zero. Of convergence is zero, because you can't go any direction, left or right, for any length. Because you're, the only value of x that it's convergent for is x equals zero. Right? Um, so then we have um this one up here. Well, what's the radius of convergence for this? So radius of convergence is, well, is infinite. Right? Because you go infinitely in either direction and you have it. Just to be clear, this should be a black bold, or bold R.
You should, okay, you should go to the third one.
The third one here, this last one, yeah, for what? The interval of convergence or?
Yeah, was it to five, right? Because.
The radi- radius, yeah.
Yeah. And earlier it was uh x plus one less than, less than one, right?
Uh, x plus one.
Five, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, uh, no coincidence, no coincidence that it's a five here.
Yeah.
Right?
Sometimes it's like, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
Yeah, so in this case it's not. If you have a situation like this where you have the value that the function centered at, like this is, this is what the function is centered at, right? We, that, that's the thing that's being raised to the power n here. It's less than some value, then definitely we are centered between um, uh, our radius of convergence will be five because we can go five in either direction from this centered value.
Yeah, if it was just like x.
But you do still have to check the endpoints. So you still have to go through this process and check the endpoints because you need to know exactly what the endpoints are, um, the particular number. So do this and then check them and then we see what it is. Okay, so how is everybody about that? I'll quickly go over the different types of uh radius of convergence and convergence. So different, different types of convergence. And I think I'm actually just gonna take a screenshot of the note that I have here of it. So. There. So we have this here. So the first way is that a series converges at x equals a and diverges for any value of x not equal to a. So the radius of convergence is zero. Um, the, for the second way is that a series always converges, so the radius of convergence is uh infinity because you go in any amount in either direction from the center point and you'll still converge. Okay, and then the other one is a, you know, a math way of saying what we just talked about is that for some value r, uh, which is a real number, there, the, the function converges such that you're, you know, you're r away in either direction from the center point. Right, you're from the center point, r away in either direction. Right? Because what this is saying is that, okay, so if a was zero, if we were centered at zero, then this would just be zero and zero, it would just be negative r to r. Right? And if you're at one, well, it's essentially what we did up here, right? Because, look, we, we were centered at, well, we centered at negative one. So we had to subtract a, well, subtract a from both sides here. Right? To get to that point. Um, and then that's what we have then. Right? Or, wait, no, we had to, well, okay, so a is, sorry, a is negative one. So adding it, we had to move this, this is our value of negative a, so we had to move that all the way to the outside here, right? To both, to both parts of the inequality. So that's essentially what it's saying. And this also counts for um another situation, which is that x is, well, let's just take a screenshot of the diagram. So here's our diagram that goes with it. So this is, this goes to, you know, this is, the, uh, the first condition is here. Yeah, this is the first condition is here, first, not condition, but situation, it's there. And that goes there. So you see, for this one, it's that if we're in some range, r on both sides, the server center value a, if we're between a minus r or a plus r, we converge, otherwise we diverge. And the second condition is actually essentially saying the opposite thing is that switch the words converge and diverge, right? And this is converge, that's what this second situation is here, this part, just that. Right, which is that we're saying for x smaller than a minus r or x greater than a plus r, we converge. So a good way to understand what this means is to look at this diagram.
Okay, and that's if like a is a value that diverges, right? But like the r value makes it convergent, whether negative r or plus r.
Well, a is the center point, a is the center, right?
Yeah, if the center point is like divergent and.
Oh yeah, that would make, that would make the center point divergent, so how does that work? I don't know. I haven't, actually never run into a situation where it is this fourth case though. Um, I thought the center point had to be convergent, but I guess not.
It's not.
Not in that fourth case, it wouldn't be because a is not part of there, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, because it, it's like that x, that, that bold black line, right? That's, that's where it would diverge, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, if, in this, in this uh fourth case, yeah. In the fourth case, it would be the opposite of what's being set up here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, I don't, I never run into, I've never run into a power function like that though, so I don't.
It's even confined.
Uh, these are the intervals of convergence which relate to the particular one. So we go there, uh, two is for that one and three is for that one. So there's any of these four situations that are possible, right? It could include either endpoint or both endpoints or none of the endpoints. Uh, and so you gotta just test it to figure that out. Right? Okay, so. Let's take a look at this next, next example. You can, a really useful thing, and the reason we actually learn power functions is that we can, you know, sometimes find that f of x, some random function f of x um can be written as a power function nicely, right? Like, for example, I did that infinite polynomial before, but that's not a, it's, that's not, you know, that's not a very clear, set example, right? Uh, that's like, you know, you don't run into that very often. So what kind of functions do we know that converge, right? That have a power function that converges to them? So for example, if I have this series, right? If I have the series uh n equals zero to infinity of a r to the n. Right, this is a geometric series. Well, we know that this converges to a over uh one minus r, right? For r between negative one and one. So if r is between negative one and one, this will converge to that. Well, if I have a function, a over one minus x, this will converge to the power series, n equals zero, a x to the n for x between negative one and one. Right? So we, we know this rule from before, this is from our um, it's five point two maybe, right? Or maybe not, but I think it's five point two. Um, and we know that and we can just use the rule backwards to say that if I have some function like this, some expression, I can write that as a, as a series like this. And it converges particularly, it converges to this function if um x is between negative one and one. Right? So let's do an example with this. So the example that we're gonna start is gonna say represent represent one over one plus x squared by a power uh series. I kind of say power functions randomly, I don't know why, they're not the same thing, but um, uh, when I say power functions, I mean powers. Unless I mean power functions, I, I, I'll be careful, I'll try to be, be careful here. So uh, represent this by a power, what'd you say, sorry?
Now, now this is funny.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
So. Well, we know really only one way to represent a function as a power series and that's if we can write it in the form one over uh a over one minus r. If we can write it like that, then we can write it as a power series. So, well, can I turn that into this? I can. So one over one minus negative x squared is equivalent to this. And now I can say that this is equal to the power series, sum n goes from zero to infinity of one a over negative x squared, uh, the negative is not part of, is not being squared, negative x squared to the power n. For x, uh, negative x squared um between one and negative one. Right? See, let's quickly make sure that this is good. Yeah. So we are gonna run into a little trouble here and we'll see if we can figure it out. So let, let's, let's just keep going. So this one here, we can rewrite this as the sum n goes from zero to infinity of negative one to the n x to the two n. And I think we can just end there, that's simplified, yep. Uh, and so now we just gotta find the condition, right? Uh, find its interval of convergence, well, that's part of the question, find its interval. So just, just to answer the question, that's the answer, but also find the interval of convergence. Well, the interval of convergence for this, for what, for what values of x does this power function, power series uh converge to this function over here? Right? Or, sorry, not that function there, this function here. Well, uh, for negative x squared being between negative one and one. So hmm, this is where I run into problems and I think I may, maybe see why Horowitz was writing this in a particular way and I maybe will try that as well. So in general, this would be um, uh, well, it would be uh, still negative one like that, I can just get rid of the negative. And then the thing is, is that I get stuck here because I have a square root, I have to take a square root. And I realize that. Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's our best friend i.
But it, that, that can't be it, right? I mean, I obviously, it, it looks like it is.
Isn't it just, uh, you're just gonna work with um absolute value of, uh, sorry, like greater than or equal to one, something like that?
Yeah, so I, I think what's gonna happen here, I think what's gonna happen here is that we have to square root everything. But square rooting this middle bit, here, I'll even write in a few steps, x squared, less than, square root one, we squared everything. Okay, sure, we have to be less than i. This, the square root of x squared is the absolute value of x less than one. And so since we're just not in the complex numbers, we just disregard this. And we have a new condition, which is that the absolute value of x has to be less than one, which gives us our actual final condition of x is between negative one. And that's our actual interval of convergence.
Yeah.
Uh, we should still check the, the endpoints though.
So it's okay to say that uh it's between i and one, and that's, that's okay to say? It won't help you.
Yeah, it is okay to say, but we're not in the complex numbers right now, so it doesn't matter.
No, I thought that I don't, like, because I saw it, I thought it was like something wrong with it, it was like, wait, are we like, I thought we were not supposed to get that, but.
No, we got it, we got it, I mean, yeah. But because this is an absolute value, we can just disregard it and we still get interval convergence. And I take back what I said about checking the endpoints, uh, we don't check the endpoints because the condition that got us this inequality is that r, the absolute value r, has to be less than one, not less than or equal to, less than one. So since that's the condition, we don't have to check the endpoints.
Because it's like similar to the whatever one minus r, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, a, yeah, one minus r. Just similar to like the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, similar, yeah, it is, because this is in the form a over one minus r, which I turn into the sum and goes from zero to infinity of a r to the n.
Which is the same as that, which is also similar to geometric series, which goes from negative one to.
Yeah, and then I just check for the interval of convergence there and I get negative one, yeah. Negative one to one, exactly.
Just. Can you scroll up for a sec?
Scroll up, yeah. This is the.
Yeah, it's right here. So you just solve for the alternating series of x to n squared, sorry, x to the two n?
Yeah. That's like the simplest form I can make of the series. But, so what we, what we know is that I can write any function, one over one minus, uh, well, actually, no, I can write, not any function, this function, one over one plus x squared equal to this sum. And I can say it's actually equal to, uh, just not for every value. It's, it's equal to this sum such that the absolute value of x is less than one. For as long as that's true.
Yeah. So it, that's already the solution? We didn't have to do any limits or anything, that's kind of weird.
Uh, yeah, we didn't have to do any limits because we're not checking when this converges. We know it only, because we're, you're using this definition backwards, this definition backwards, right? So we, by definition, we found this power series here and that's, that's the answer.
Yes, so because we already know that it converges from that range, from negative one to one, we're gonna find. Wait, what are we finding the x value, right?
Uh, we just need to find the, the, the question's asking for power series representation and interval of convergence.
Uh, okay.
And interval of, whoops, of convergence.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the answer for that one. Okay, let's keep going. So the next example I have is x cubed over five minus x to the four. Same question as before, which is find the power series representation and find its interval of convergence for this function here. Okay, so again, we only have one function we know how to represent. We only know how to represent one over one mi- uh, a over one minus r. So can I write this as a over one minus r? Okay, well, I can kind of, so I can write this as x cubed times one over one, uh, hold on. Um, well, let's just start, five minus x to the four. And then what I can do is I want this to be one minus r though. So I can just factor out a, a five from the denominator, so factor out a fifth from the whole thing. Um, so that's gonna be equal to x cubed times one over, uh, so it's gonna be five times one minus x to the four over five. Right? And this over five can just go over here with the x cubed over five times one over one minus x to the four over five. This, we can represent as a power function nicely and we just multiply by x cubed over five. So this is equal to x cubed over five times the sum, uh, nope, n doesn't go up there, n equals zero to infinity of a, which is one, r to the n, right? So r is uh x to the four over five, x four over five to the n. Okay, and this converges to um, we're not quite done yet, but this can, this does converge to um uh, the function that we want, which is this uh x cubed over five minus x to the four, for um, the absolute value of x cubed, no, x to the four over five, less than one. In other words, uh, the function, the uh ratio is between negative one and one, which means it's between negative five, x to the four is between negative five and five, and we just take the fourth root, uh, which again, the fourth root of a negative number will give us um something we don't want. So um, we just say that this is, okay, this is gonna give us the fourth root of negative five, the fourth, sorry, the fourth root of x to the four, the fourth root of five, well, okay, this is complex. This is the absolute value of x and this is just the fourth root of, of five. So we just say that x is between negative, the fourth root of five and the fourth root of five. And that's our interval of convergence.
Wait, so. A little bit your web comes a little bit.
Yeah.
Wait, when we're doing this, are we checking for the, the, call it the a n of the summation and not the, not the um, the const, the constant, like, that's what's outside, which, can you scroll to the previous one?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, so like right here. Oh, we actually, so we don't actually um check for what's inside the bracket?
No, because that doesn't affect convergence. The only thing that affects convergence is the r value. R has to be between negative one and one. Remember up here was that this series converges to a over one minus r because uh when r is between negative one and one. And r is between negative one and one. A is not, a doesn't change convergence.
Yeah.
It doesn't depend, there's no, nothing saying anything about a over here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you're right. So the, what we're doing solving, like, the previous things when we're using the ratio test and we actually had to solve for a.
Yeah.
Like, it's. Like, it's, they're both under the power series, which is 6.1, but what's the difference, like?
Well, here, here we have a, well, what are we doing up here? Here we have a power function or power series and we're asking what, for what values of x does it converge? Right? Here, we have, we have what the power series will converge to. And we're saying what power series represents this and for what interval of x does it converge to this? So, we already know what the power series is converging to in this case, it, which is one over one plus x squared.
Yeah.
Right? We don't have to test, we just know because we're using by definition, this definition right here.
Yeah, it worked, that it converges.
Between negative one, r is between negative one and one.
Ouch, yeah.
And I reverse, reverse it here, I reverse it here. Again, a doesn't affect, a is a constant, doesn't affect the, uh, convergence.
Yeah, makes sense. Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, good. Okay, so we know that this will converge for values of x between those two things. Well, we just have a few more steps here, we're not quite done because we can, uh, just bring that constant into the sum. I mean, this is technically the right answer, but I think you wanna finish everything so that almost everything's inside the sum. So, remember, we can bring x cubed over 5 into the sum, no problem, because the sum is in terms of n. Uh, x is a constant, so, because we're saying this for, for a specific value of x, right? What is this series? And 5 is a constant, so we can just bring that in, so it's gonna be the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of, okay, x cubed over 5 times x to the 4n over 5 to the n, which is going to be the sum. Whoop. N equals zero to infinity of, okay, well, it's gonna be x to the 4n plus 3 over 5 to the n plus 1. And that's the final answer. That and this. Those are the final answers of the question. And yeah, there we go. So many questions I have here, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, I have six more from the lectures. I think lecture problems are good to go through though. They're pretty illustrative. Okay, am I good to move on? Sound like it? Good. Uh, just checking, oh, I should have, uh, I should have, um, discussions open, so, open discussions. Yeah, there we go. Uh, and discussions will be open there, so I can see. So, let's take a look here.
I have a question.
Yeah, for sure.
From that last part you did, couldn't we have just done that from the beginning?
Uh, move that x cubed over 5?
Yeah.
Like, like, yeah, 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 and done, the, the reason I didn't do that is because our condition for convergence is on this, it depends on this. It doesn't depend on this. This doesn't have to be less than, less than one, this particular bit of it has to be less than one. Right?
Also, it doesn't matter which order we do it in.
It's just that if I were to go all the way here, I'd have to anyways backtrack to this to be able to check the convergence. Because again, it, it, this is what matters for convergence, that little bit there, right? The r value, it has to be less than one.
Uh, sorry, just one more thing. We completely ignore that, that the negative fi- the fourth root of negative 5 is, like, we're just, we forget about that part, right?
Fourth root of negative 5, yeah, that, we forget about that, yeah, yeah. If we were in complex analysis, we wouldn't, um, but that's not the course we're taking, so it doesn't matter. So, yeah. Okay, so, let's, uh, let's move on. So, the next example is, but of course, anybody can stop me if they have any questions. Uh, next one is find the, so, back to the other questions we had, which was like find the, uh, interval of convergence. So, this is find the radius of convergence and the interval of convergence. For the sum, n goes from 1 to infinity of negative 1 to the n, uh, x to the n over root n. Okay. Um, okay, let's try it out. So, ratio test is what I'd go with first, right? Ratio test. Uh, it's going to be, uh, the limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute value of negative 1 to the n plus 1, x to the n plus 1, over the square root of n plus 1 times the square root of n over negative 1 to the n, x to the n, absolute value. Uh, like we discussed before in our other videos, these things cancel. And so, we're left with just this limit in here, limit, uh, and also, sorry, just to, this cancels as well. So, we just have an x, an absolute value of x, which I'm gonna take out, so the absolute value of x times the limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute value of root n over root n plus 1. That limit is 1. Pretty sure.
Yeah, he's, there's still a negative 1 there though.
Uh, yeah, 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 you're right. But the thing is, is that, um, okay, technically yes, but I think in all cases, you can just treat it as these fully cancel. These fully cancels, since we're in an absolute value, so these do cancel, right? These do cancel, oh. What? My headphones died? But they were, they were 100% charged, okay, I have to find the cord now. Oh, God, sorry, I have to find the cord now. Hopefully I can find it fast. Um, yes, I can. Okay, sorry, give me, give me just a second here. I gotta plug these in. Oh, wait, no, 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 wait a second, hold on, they're on, my headphones are on. But I can't hear anything. I can hear my computer. Nope, someone's talking and I cannot hear them again.
Where's the resty? Come on, one more time. Well, give me, get it, it's good.
I can hear now.
One, two, three, uh.
Thank you for the beautiful harmony, thank you very much.
We should stick to engineering.
Yeah, we should totally.
I think so, I think so. But, give it some practice.
Just stick a mic.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know why my headphones did that weird thing, but, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, um, let me keep going here. I don't know, the headphone said, it's like powered off and then it switched to, again, the headphones are doing something weird. Anyways, I should really fix it, figure this out before I start the stream. They usually don't cause trouble, it's just that since I'm using OBS, I get confused, uh, so, that's why. And also on Discord, so, that's why, am I still recording? As I am, we're good. Okay, so, let's continue here, well, this limit is 1, so our result from the ratio test, everybody can still see and hear me, right? Is less than 1. Okay, sounds good. Let me check that I'm in the recording, I don't wanna mess up anything. Could someone say something quickly or harmonize again?
Yeah.
Yes, we're good.
Oh, already?
Okay. Okay, well, you, you'll harmonize again later on.
Doesn't.
Um, so.
We'll get it next time.
You'll get it next time. So, the absolute value of x has to be less than 1, which is, um, that's the condition, there you go. X has to be between negative 1 and 1. There's no other, nothing else we have to do here, that's the condition. Uh, so, uh, this, so the question was, what's the radius and interval of convergence? So, the radius of convergence, which is just an r, is 1. And the interval of convergence is negative 1 to 1. Do the bounds count though? That's the question we have to answer. So, let's go to our, yeah?
Before you move on, isn't that infinity over infinity, don't we have to like do the whole, uh, lab, don't we have to like solve? There's a question?
Um, all, I, I know this is 1 because the, the highest power of n in, on top and bottom.
Is 1.
Is 1, is, sorry, is, is, no, no, is, is one half, right? It's one half here.
Yeah, yeah.
And one half. And then, if that's true and you're taking a limit to infinity, yeah, you can do it with a bunch of lappi tal, you can do it with a bunch of whatever you wanna do. Um, I, I mean, actually, you do it with just, uh, multiplying by some powers of n. But you just take the ratio of the coefficients, so 1 and 1, so 1 divided by 1 is 1, so the answer's gonna be 1.
Yeah.
Right? The highest power. Right? So, yeah, that's that. Okay, so, uh, our ra- radius of convergence is 1, our interval of convergence, we have to check. Uh, it's gonna be from negative 1 to 1, but do we include negative 1 and 1? So, when x is negative 1, let's check that series, it's gonna be the sum, n goes from 0, or n, n goes from 1 actually, cause the denominator would be 0. Uh, negative 1 to the n, negative 1 to the n times negative 1 to the n over root n. Okay, negative 1 to the n times negative 1 is going to be the sum. N goes from 1 to infinity of, okay, well, this is 1 to the n over root n, which is the sum. Terrible sum, but whatever. Uh, n goes, uh, from 1 to infinity of 1 over root n, which diverges cause it's a p-series with a p, uh, less than 1, or less than less than 1, yeah. Less than 1. Right? Cause the, the power is a half. So, it diverges. Um, so, negative 1 is not gonna be included, let's check 1, x equals 1, it's gonna be the sum. Um, n goes from 1 to infinity of negative 1 to the n, 1 to the n over root n. Well, 1 to the n doesn't matter. So, essentially, we just have an alternating series here. Um, n equals 1, the sum, and, um, n equals 1 to infinity of negative 1 to the n times 1 over root n. Well, we can do a divergence, um, not divergence test, sorry, we can do a, uh, alternating series test on this unless there's just a simpler way that I'm just not seeing. Um, diverge would be conditionally, yeah, I don't really see a simpler way. So, we just take the, I'm not gonna write everything about the convergence test, so, uh, I'm sorry, about the alternating series test. But what we check is, okay, is b n decreasing? Yep, as n gets bigger, that value gets smaller. Um, is the limit as n goes to infinity 0? Yep. Therefore, a n converges. Converges. Uh, technically, not, doesn't matter, but it converges conditionally. Right? Because b n diverges, so it conver- converges conditionally. Doesn't really matter though, we do still include it. So, that means finally, our interval of convergence is negative 1 to 1, including 1, not including negative 1.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, can we?
Yes, they hear you, yeah.
Like, okay, you know, you had, I think you did a question earlier where you did, uh, alternate, alternating harmony. Some, is that like one rule? Where once it's, uh, alternating and it's like a p-series, it's, it's, uh, converges?
Um, no, well.
There's that form alone, isn't that?
I'm using, I'm using the alternating series test when I say that, I'm using the alternating.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes sense now.
Right, good? You're good with that? Yeah, I'm using alternat- so, I'm just checking the b n's, I'm checking the b n's, I'm checking that the b n's are decreasing and their limit is 0.
Yeah, and then it's, uh, it would be conditionally convergent, yeah.
This one would also be conditionally convergent, this one here is also conditionally convergent. But it's still converges, a n converges. In this case, right, a n converges.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so there's that question, any other questions about that question?
Also, you said that the limit to purchase 1, right?
This limit is, uh, this limit is 1.
Yeah, if, if, in the previous examples, when we get a limit, eh, like 8 or something like that, it's like either 0, or we had r going from either side.
Oh, here, we got a limit.
That's what's kinda confusing.
Yeah, 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 here, here we, where's the limit? Here we got a limit of 1 as well, it's just that our expression was more complicated. Right? Our expression was more complicated here. So, we had more, a more complicated interval to deal with. Our limit was also 1, this is, this limit is 1.
Yeah. So, we had, uh, yeah, sorry, go on.
I just, just, uh, we had a more complicated thing outside the limit.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay. Cause I was, I was a bit confused, so once it's, once it converges to 1, like, if it was like, what if it was like 2 or something, then?
Well, if it converged to 2, then you'd put a 2 there, it'd be 2 times as much.
Oh, and then to just say, okay.
It'd be 2 times, yep, then it would just be 2.
Oh, the, that's where it goes, uh, for some reason, I thought it was on the other side, it says.
Well, it doesn't, like, yeah, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't go here though, it wouldn't, this, this wouldn't be 2. Right? Yeah, that's, the condition is that it's less than 1. But if, if this limit evaluated to 2, if it was 2n over n plus 1, then it would be 2 here, right? And it would just be 2 times as much.
Yeah, yeah, I like it, thanks.
Good, no problem. So, our next example is same question, find radius of convergence and the interval of convergence for this power series. So, the sum, n goes from probably 0, uh, k to the e, x to the k over e to the k. Oh, it was probably k, goes from, yeah, although I k to me means partial sum, but, whatever. So, and you'll notice that in my notes also, I should, I should say that out loud somewhere. When, when my notes, when I use a k, I'm talking about a partial sum and when I'm talking about an infinite sum, I use an n, always. So, yeah, okay. So, this sum right here, in fact, I'm gonna switch it to an n because I don't wanna, I don't wanna have any additional confusion. So, we wanna tell the radius of convergence and the, um, uh, interval of convergence for this sum right here. Okay, well, let's start by, uh, ratio test. Right? Ratio test. So, n to the, well, it would be, sorry, it would be limit as n goes to infinity of n plus 1 to the e x to the n plus 1. This isn't one of those weird confusing ones though, is it? I mean, it's confusing, but, no, 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 it's it's okay, yeah. Uh, x to the n plus 1, e to the n plus 1, times e to the n, n to the e x to the n plus 1, oh no, x to the n. Okay. In absolute values, I should do that in black. So, what cancels? Well, e to the n and e to the n cancel, x to the n and x to the n cancel. All we have left is n to the e and n plus 1 to the e. So, we're left with, well, an absolute value of x goes out, there is an e on the denominator as well. So, it's gonna be the absolute value of x over e times the limit, that, that over e comes from this plus 1 here, from the bottom. Limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute value of n plus 1 to the e, whoops, to the e over n to the e. Right? This limit is 1. So, we get absolute value of x over e is our result from the ratio test. Again, that limit is 1 because the highest power of n on the top and bottom is e. So, we have, um, the ratio of the, uh, the ratio of the, um, what's it called? Coefficients, which is 1 over 1, so we're good. And so, we have this as a result from our ratio test, x, absolute value of x over e. This value has to be less than 1. So, the absolute value of x over e has to be less than 1. I- in other words, okay, well, our, um, absolute value of x has to be less than e. Right? And that means that x has to be between negative e and e. So, by the way, I can say my radius of convergence is e. And now we have to decide our interval of convergence, because the interval of convergence will be negative e to e, but do we include negative e or e? To check that, we go up here, right? And this is going to be, um, well, it's going to be, uh, I plug in, let's start with plugging in e actually, so when x, oh, start with negative e, whatever. Uh, n to the e, negative e to the n, so it's gonna be the sum, n goes from 0 to infinity of, uh, what was it again? n to the e negative e to the n over e to the n. So, does this ser- series converge or diverge? Well, this is equivalently, the sum, n goes from 0 to infinity of n to the e minus 1 to the n, e to the n over e to the n. E to the n's cancel. We have an alternating series, right? Well, this series, um, um, what does it do? Let's see. It uh, I can't tell right off the bat, for some reason. 0 and 0, this is gonna, gonna be an alternating series, n to the e. Okay, um, it, if it converges, it conditionally converges. Because, uh, n to the e diverges. Does this converge though? Do I have to use ratio test again? That doesn't really make sense, m plus 1. No, I guess I do have to use if I get 1 inconclusive, so I would be inconclusive with the ratio test. Um.
Uh, it diver, that diver.
How do you?
The limit, the limit doesn't approach 0.
Um.
That's one of the alternating series tests things.
Oh, yeah, the limit, yeah.
If the limit doesn't approach 0, it's divergent.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I forgot about that. But if the.
It's also divergent for, uh, like, absolute.
Uh, well, it's definitely divergent for the, for the, uh, without the negative, yeah, it is definitely convergent, yeah. And so, yeah, what we have here is that by the alternating series test which says that, so the alternating series test is if b n is decreasing and the limit is 0, a n converges, but.
That's the divergence test, the limit is the divergence test.
Yeah, the limit part of that is, well, the li- the alternating series test is, that's part of it. But I think it's, the reason the alternating series test has that limit there is because of the divergence test. Right? But the, the alternating series test is saying, okay, is b n, uh, decreasing? Right? And the limit as n goes to infinity of b n. Right, and the limit as N goes to infinity of BN equal to zero. If both of these things are true, AN converges, if this isn't true, inconclusive, if this isn't true, AN diverges. Okay, so the fact that it's not decreasing is inconclusive, but the fact that the limit is not zero means that this diverges, so therefore this diverges.
Sorry, and the second one we just said is that if BN decreases, but the limit isn't zero, then it diverges.
Then it definitely diverges, yeah.
But if it's not that we're wrong, we're, we don't, BN doesn't decrease, we can't just say it's inconclusive.
Inconclusive, the alternating series test doesn't tell us anything, yeah, exactly. Right, so therefore this di- this diverges, right? Um, and then.
Okay, it's not equal to zero, okay.
Make it a little nicer, right? Yeah, the limit's not zero, cause it's gonna be infinity to the E, so we have, um. This diverges, so negative E is not gonna be part of it, and let's check X equals E, it's gonna be the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of N to the E, E to the N, over E to the N. Well, we just have a normal divergent series. Right, so our interval of convergence is negative E to E, not including either. And I have about four questions left. Maybe let's do that and then we'll, well, let's see how long it takes, okay, so I'm gonna keep going, but if anybody has any questions, just stop me. Uh, so the next one is find just the radius of convergence, I don't know why not the interval, oh, I guess, cause it doesn't really matter. Um, of this sum, N equals, uh, one, sum from N equals one. To infinity of, okay, so it's written a little bit weird, two times four times duh. Times dot, 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 times two K. Over. Two K factorial. X to the, X to the K. Oh, and I wanna switch them all to ends because I don't like keys. There you go, X to the.
Is it a partial sum, or is it a?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a, yeah, that's why I switched to ends, because it's an infinite sum.
So one more thing, though, the limit that we find, is it always, basically, it's used to, like, it's multiplied by the. Whatever we had on like the right and the left hand side, like a constant to find the interval of convergence?
Well, remember, the ratio test, it depends on its output, what do we get out of the ratio test, so what we get out is this. But this limit is one, so it's one times this, that's what we get.
Yeah.
But if this was five, then it'd be five times this, that's what we got out.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, I constantly forget, so.
Don't worry, don't worry, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, though. Cause it's actually still being multiplied, okay, yeah.
What if that diverges?
Uh, then, then you, then you do, then you get the infinity case, which is divergent. Right, because the ratio test, the ratio test is that, okay, so between zero and one, including zero, absolutely convergent. If your result is greater than one, or the limit is infinity, divergent, if the limit is one, inconclusive.
Well, yeah, cause in that case, we can set, um, X equals to zero, and then it works.
That's true, that's true, yeah, that's true.
And so it's that one case where, um, the A, it, where, which is our centering point, is the only one that it, uh, converges.
Converges to, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking about the diagram.
Oh, wow, that actually is, uh, that actually makes sense, but like. Um, i- isn't this limit, does it go to one?
This limit goes to one.
So, did you say it's inclusive? Sorry?
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking if hypothetically, um, that limit went to, uh, if, if that limit diverged. Then we would just say X is equal to zero, and that's the only person, uh, converging.
Yeah, but, uh, if it's, if it's between an including zero and less than one, it's, it's, it's convergent, right?
Oh, yeah, well, you don't, yeah, 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 this result has to be, has to be. Like this, right, it has to be greater than zero and less than one, but we already know that it's definitely greater than zero. Because it's the absolute value of something over a positive number.
Yeah, so where, where does the limit equal into one come in then? Because this limit equals one, so shouldn't it just be? What, what, what did you say when it's equal to one?
So, so look here, the next step would be absolute value of X over E times one. Which is the absolute value of X over E, which now has to be less than one. Right, this limit.
Yeah.
Turned into just one.
I thought for the one, it was inconclusive.
Um, that's, that's if the result of the whole thing was one, but the result of the whole.
Including.
Including this, including this, if that was one, then it's inconclusive, but our result is X over E times one, which is just X over E.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
And, and we're getting this, um, less than one from our geometric series, right?
No, no, this is from just ratio test, from the, from the results of the ratio test.
Also, this negative, this, this less than one part is. If we want it to converge, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, so we're looking at, we're looking for only when X converges. And for, for that to occur, because of the ratio test, it has to be less than one.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it has to be, I'll, I'll put this right up right here, there's the ratio test, right? This is, this is the rule we're using.
Okay.
Right, it's just that we already know it's greater than zero, so we don't have to worry about that bound, um, we just have to worry that it's less than one.
Uh-huh, and all of the, the L is including the whatever we have, like the absolute.
The X, with the X, the X is part of it, it's part of the limit, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's all of that, so, cause like when it says L, you think of a constant, but it's not really a constant.
Well, X is a constant, though, X is a constant.
With respect to N, yeah, okay.
N is the thing that's changing here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a function of X, so X is a constant when you plug some value of X into it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I really found that, for the most part, the math isn't hard, it's just that we need to know what we're trying to calculate.
Yeah, it's tricky.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is.
That's what, that's what.
Why did you get rid of that?
Are those dots?
Those are dots, like dot, dot, like infinite, dot, not, well, not infinite, but dot, 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 continue.
Oh, you saw this already, or you're gonna?
No, I'm gonna solve this now.
Okay.
Right, so, yeah, so for this one here. It's actually not as complicated as it looks, so, well, we just do the ratio test, okay? So what would the ratio test give us, so we have two times four times dot, dot, dot. Times two N plus two. Over two N plus two. Factorial, and I'll put X to the N plus one up here, times, okay, well, it's, uh, two N. Factorial over two times four times, okay, well, it's, uh, dot, dot, dot. Times two N. And we just have X to the N down here. Well, what cancels? This cancels. This cancels. And a few more things canceled, but that's all we can cancel for this exact second. Let me make sure I did everything right there, two. Okay, for, okay, let, sorry, this is a limit as N goes to infinity of the absolute value of this. So, okay, well, what can we take out, we can take out an X, right, the X from the numerator can come out, so it's gonna be the absolute value of X. Times the limit as N goes to infinity of the absolute value of.
Hey, couldn't you break that down more as well?
This does not cancel, yeah, hold on, this does not cancel. All we have, all we canceled right now is that, so let me, yeah, let me break this down a little bit more, this is two times four times dot, dot, dot. Times two N, times two N plus two. Right, because we're going up by twos each time, so if we're going up to two N plus two, then two N is the, the one right before it.
What, what is that, two times four times dot, 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 mean?
It's, it's, it's an infinite multiplication, as that we haven't learned the notation for it, so they can't write it in the proper way, so you just gotta learn, you gotta read, write it like this. So two N, let's just start with two N, is saying, okay, well, well, for some value of N, N equals five, right, so we're gonna do two times four times.
Six times eight times ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be five, ten, right?
Yep, and that's the value. For, for N equals five.
Okay.
It's a, it's a finite amount there, it's not an infinite amount, because it has.
We're taking it as N equals infinity.
We're taking the limit as N goes to infinity, yeah, exactly, but, uh, that's the idea, so if I had to two N plus two. Right, well, then, this would be the same thing as if I did two times four times dot, dot, dot. Times dot, 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 times. Two N, two N plus two, right, which is, which is gonna be ten. Times two times five plus two is just twelve, which is the same thing, in both these cases, I get the same thing. Both of these are equal to that.
My tiny little brain, I'm just thinking that that would just converge, uh, sorry, that would just diverge every time.
Yeah, but for, for fixed, for fixed values of N, it doesn't, right? For a fixed value of N, it does.
No, no, I, I'm saying like for the limit, I'm just thinking that, won't that always diverge?
But remember, we're doing a ratio test, so things cancel when you do a ratio test, right? Yeah.
So, so that two times four times blah, 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 does not cancel here?
Not yet, it will in a second, it will in a second.
Okay.
Also, what about the, I, I don't know if you just like saving it for another step, but what about the factorial?
Yeah, it will in just a second, two N plus one, two N factorial, right? Times two N factorial over two times four, dot, 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 times two N. Now, bunch of stuff cancels, that cancels with that, that cancels with that, and that cancels with that. Is that supposed to happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's supposed to happen, good, so. Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was like, where did our X go?
It's out in the front, it's out in the front, yeah.
So what was, what was wrong with the, the previous step, why we couldn't do that, the factorial bit?
This didn't cancel, this didn't cancel with that, actually, what I said before was that this cancels with that. Oh, actually, that would've, that would've worked, sorry, that would, that would've worked, yep. Uh, it just didn't seem so convincing to me, but yeah, that, that would've worked as well, but at least we can show that since this is true. We can expand it a little bit, and this definitely cancels with that, cause they're the same thing. Up to two N, right? And so now we just have absolute value of X times the limit. As N goes to infinity of the absolute value of one over two N plus one. Right, that limit is zero, so our result is zero, which means, um, the power series converges. Regardless of N. Sorry, regardless of X. For any value of X.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's from zero to negative, so zero to one, including zero.
Yeah, including zero, right, including zero, but we got zero, the, the only value you can get out of the ratio test is zero. Doesn't matter what value, cause the X cancels, it's just times zero, doesn't cancel, but we're multiplying it by zero here, right, so doesn't matter what that is. Uh, so negative infinity to infinity is our interval of convergence, and there's that.
And so do you have to test it, cause it's to infinity?
We don't have to test it, you can't plug in infinity, right, so.
Yeah. Next semester, but wait.
Well, if maybe, yeah, maybe if, if some of us have, has a future in math.
There's more.
Yeah, if someone has a future in math.
Like, everything we learn.
Now, you got this discount.
There's a name for that, I forget what the name is, is for when you count infinity and negative infinity as, as part of the real numbers.
Crazy, that's what it's called.
Well, isn't that, is this?
I gotta find it.
Negative, can it be a concept, instead of like an actual?
Yeah, it is, so there's a, uh, let me, let me look up, real numbers including infinity. It is called extended real number line, that's what it's called.
Extended real number line, gosh, I saw, like, you saw, like, you'd hear that in grade seven, but it's like, no, it's like all the way up here, right?
So, it, it has two endpoints, that's the thing, is that the extended real number line has two endpoints, namely, negative infinity and infinity, right? And, but anyways, that's like math that we don't have to deal with, it's fine.
Yeah, it's just like, but wait, there's more.
We don't have to deal with.
We don't have to, we don't have to take a calc three as engineers, do we?
Yeah, we do, we do, that's what, that's what, that's what, uh, vector calculus is.
Oh, that's vector, oh, isn't it multi-variable calculus?
Vector calculus and multi-variable calculus and, yeah.
You take, you take four math classes.
Yeah.
You take discrete cal-, uh, discrete something.
Math, yeah, discrete math for engineers.
Yeah, there's one math, there's, I think, isn't there two sections of?
Man, vector calculus is gonna suck, get ready for complex.
Apparently, apparently calc three is the easiest of the first three calc courses, that's what I've heard from people. After you've taken calc one and calc two, calc three is easy in comparison to calc one and calc two, so take that as you will, uh, you know.
I dare that, let's go.
You'll see.
I mean, I feel like that's on the. Yeah, I feel like that's on the premise that you remember everything, though.
Possibly, yeah, possibly.
It's like, yeah, this is the premise that it would be easy, so if you didn't get these two.
Yes. This question?
So, so towards the end, like, since it's equal to zero, it converges regardless of X?
The, the results we got out of, out of the ratio test is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the absolute value of X times zero. Which is always zero, regardless of what X is.
After if the ratio test is zero, then it's, uh, infinity.
The, yeah, it doesn't matter what X is, you'll always converge.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Right, no problem. So, yeah. Okay, our next question is find the radius of convergence for this function, uh, again, it's, it's really just. Do the ratio test, uh, so the, this, uh, series, I mean, so sum N goes from inf-, uh, one to infinity of. Two N factorial X to the N over N to the two N. Okay, so to solve this one, well, we're gonna do the ratio test. Right, then we need the limit as N goes to infinity of two N plus two. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll skip a few steps, I'm not, not, not skip a few steps. Uh, two, uh, sorry, N to the two N plus two, times, um. Oh, sorry, it's N plus one. To the two N plus two, times N, two to the N, over two N. Factorial X to the. So what cancels, well, X to the N cancels, good, something canceled at least. Now, we're gonna need to cancel these factorials in here, those are gonna cause trouble, so. We need to take, again, it's absolute value, we have an absolute value of X there, so absolute value of X. Times the limit as N goes to infinity of two N plus two, times two N plus one. Times two N factorial over two N. Factorial times N to the two N over N plus one, to the two N plus two, okay. So, this over here. Um. Hold on. Yeah, cause the factorial's in the nu- numerator there, okay. So, we have a little bit of a complicated limit to evaluate here, this is the limit as N goes to infinity. Of two N plus two, times two N plus one. Times, okay, and now what can I do here to figure out this limit, well, I can take out a. N plus one squared and put it over there, this then becomes N squared over. N plus one squared to the N. Well, my writing gets bigger as we go to the right, but it's okay, so. Yeah, I did a lot in that step there.
Yeah, why, and why do we, why is it still separated, I'm kinda confused, uh, it's like, we can do it over, we finish, continue, continue.
But what, what's separated, sorry, what, what was it?
I was a bit confused with why, like, oh, you just separated a two N, right?
The two, well, what I did is I separated the, the terms that have N in the base, and, sorry, that have N in the exponent, those two have N in the exponent. I put them in one fraction, all the rest of the stuff, the factorials, I put in its own fraction.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and then you just separated the N plus one with the two N and.
Right, this plus two went down to become that, and then here, I just pulled the N out to be an exponent for the whole thing. I did a lot in that step there, so if it's confusing, I can, if more people are confused, I can write it with more steps. If not, I'll keep going.
Well, I kinda get it now, so I have, I was kinda confused.
So, X times the limit as N goes to infinity of, okay, this is two N plus two. Over two N plus, I think I might have to foil that, so I just will next time. Uh, and then this right here, oh, I can actually take a two N out, what am I talking about, I can take a two N out there. Well, this is almost E, right, because, uh, one over that would be E. So I can just do that, it's gonna be, um, N plus one over N to the power of negative two N. Flip the fraction, made the exponent negative, same thing. This is only a few steps away from E. And limit as N goes to infinity of, okay, now this over here, well, we have to figure this out, so. This is going to be, okay, four N squared and some other stuff, which doesn't matter, and this is going to be N squared. And some other stuff that doesn't matter, times. Oh, hold on, will it not matter, yeah, it won't matter.
Wait, why did you even flip the, what was the reason for flipping the?
Right now, I'll get one plus one over N to the negative two N, and I'll, I mean, I'll say to the N. To the negative two, right?
Yeah, oh.
Absolute value of X times the limit as. Absolute value of x times the limit as n goes to infinity of the absolute, so this is four, that first limit is four. Times.
Yeah.
E to the negative two. Sorry, and I, I don't, I, I evaluate the limit, that's evaluating the limit.
Oh, you evaluated the limit of one plus one over n to the n.
Is e to the negative two.
And how did you get the n squared, four n squared over s?
Uh, that's just, I, I just foiled this, just foiled this stuff.
You just brought it through?
Yeah, I just foiled it, but I, there are, there are other terms there, uh, there are other terms there.
It just doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, we just need the first term.
The dot dot confused me because I thought that was, you know, like in the previous example, we had two times four.
I'll, I'll write it out fully, I'll write it out fully, I'm sure more people are confused, so let me just, two n plus four n plus two, so six n plus two. And this is going to be n squared plus two n plus one. But again, that doesn't change anything, the limit is still four.
Because it's still four, yeah, no, sorry, I was just confused with that.
No, don't worry, yeah, yeah, good. Um, okay, so, well, this has to be less than one, right? That has to be less than one, so in other words. The absolute value of x of four x over e squared has to be less than one. Right, so four over e squared x has to be between one and negative one. So um, it has to be between e squared, negative e squared over four, and e squared over four. So that is our um. That, and all we care about is actually the radius of convergence, so the radius of convergence is e squared over four. I didn't ask for the interval of convergence, so we don't have to check anything, you just asked for radius, so that's all we. And thus needs. So this had a complicated limit to figure out, um, but we did it.
This looks like a hardest question for sure.
Yeah, that, that was a good one, so, yeah, seems like it. Series centered at, okay, now another one of our other kind of questions, which is expressed as a power series centered at a equals one. So centered. At a equals one, express this function as a power series, one over two minus x, and find the interval of convergence. So again, we're centered at a minus, uh, a equals one. What that means is that I have to write the denominator, the thing that's gonna be to the power of n, our r value. Has to include x minus one. It has to be one over one minus something times x minus one to make this true, to make this equivalent to that. Right? Well, the first thing I can do. Well, no, I can't, I'll leave that there, actually.
Before you continue, this, the last one, you didn't have to check for the, the radius, like, two endpoints, you just had the.
I didn't ask for the interval, I didn't ask for the, it just asked for the radius.
Okay.
So you only have to check for the, the endpoints when you're looking for the interval.
Yeah, alright.
So, this is a new question, so, give me a second here, we need, okay, first of all, let me, let me try to write this in the form a over one minus r. So that would be uh, one over two. One over two times one over one minus x over two, right? If I were to do this right now, this would be centered at zero. So I wanna have a, I wanna put a minus one in here. I wanna put a minus one in here. With the x. So essentially, I added one, so I need to subtract one again. Subtracting one would get me a zero, oof, that doesn't look good. Um. Subtracting one would get me a zero here, so I would just have negative x over two.
Wait, ju- couldn't you just keep the two in there and then do minus one plus one? And you just get three minus x minus one.
Average one or negative one over two instead of a negative one? Because when you multiply that two in, you know.
And then you would just, because you have to add one, because you're.
Oh, add one here, okay, yeah, x, yeah.
And then you would just divide by three, right?
Okay, one over three minus x minus one, so we got the thing in the form we want, we want x minus one to be the r value. It's almost there, it's not quite there, and yeah, exactly, now we just divide by three, so it's gonna be one third, or factor out a third, it's gonna be one minus.
Wait, how would it be plus one, sorry? Because if you do x minus one plus one, and if, when you take the one out of the brackets, it would be like minus one?
Yeah, yeah, it does have to be like, yeah, so we would just, uh, this is, this one here counts to the fraction. As a positive one, because it's negative that, um, so it's positive ones, we have to subtract one. So then this is one minus that, and we're good, let me check that, yeah, it's one minus that. Okay, so there we go, we wrote it in the right form, now we just have this, and we can write this. A little nicer, uh, one over one minus x minus one. Can be written as the infinite sum, n equals zero to infinity of x minus one to the n. Someone's got their microphone on with some background noise.
That was beautifully done, though, I must say.
What, what was beautifully done, this question?
Try, yeah, just try to find what it is.
Yeah, 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 so there you go, so you have to figure out how to write that as. The r value, the r value has to end up being x minus one because of this fact that we need to be centered at one. That means the thing being to the power of n in our power function, when you plug in one into it, you have to get zero. Uh, in other words, it's a, it's a factor, which is x minus one.
Because it's x minus a, right?
It's x minus a, a is one.
Yes, a is one, okay.
Interesting that, because we just changed this fraction, if we were to center it at zero. We find that one ha- like, one half x to the n. Like the ser- ser- this, the sum of one half x to the n.
Yeah.
If centered at zero, would be, because it's the same fraction, we haven't changed it.
Well, it would be, it would be, yeah, one ha- one half x to the n, right? Like, like x, x over two, all that's to the n, right, so it's als- also, like, it's a x to the n over two to the n. Yeah, and that would be, well, that would be, can we say it's the same function? Yeah, as long as x is between.
Function, it's equal to, because we haven't changed the value of.
Yeah, 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 we haven't changed the value of the fraction, right, we haven't changed that, so that's not, yeah, so. That makes sense, be interesting to see what that looks like. Um, maybe we'll do that at the end, I wanna put a note here, let's see, what is?
Two, two minutes of conversation went over my head, I didn't get it, what are you guys talking about?
This.
Facts, what are y'all talking about?
Okay, well, what we're saying is that, is that this is true, right? Okay, but what if I centered it, what if I just centered it at zero? What if I just took one over uh, two minus x, was it? One over two minus x? Yeah, what if I just centered that at zero? Well, that would just be one half, oh yeah, the one half does go out, it would be one half. Oh yeah, no, this isn't true, sorry, this is not right, it would be, uh, we can, we can factor out the one half, so it's one half, one minus x. Oh, never mind, sorry, I keep, I keep going back and forth, this was true, this was true. Uh, to the n, so, although it doesn't have to be there, so, never mind, this is.
It'd be one half to the n plus one, though, because you'd have to add.
Why, why plus one?
Because you have one half to the n from that part of the, like, from the, the fraction. You have x over two, that's the value you're plugging in x over two to the power of n, that gives you a half to the n, and you have to.
Oh, and then move the half back in, yeah, move the half back, yeah, so n equals zero to infinity.
Well, do we have to move it back in? Can we just leave it here for, for it to look good?
Um.
You might lose marks on that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, you probably should move it in, so this would be x to the n over two to the n plus one. This is the same, I mean, it represents the same fraction. Two minus x, it represents, like, this fraction and this fraction are equivalent, and they're both equal to two different. Functions, two different power functions, so what I was gonna look up with, with this, maybe at the end, we'll look at it, what does it actually look like? If I take some fixed value of n, some, some um, uh, partial sum of this and plot it. How does it look around it? And that's getting into, um, you know, yeah, it's getting into six point three stuff, but. Uh, that's, that's the idea, anyways, that's not six point one, so don't worry about if that's confusing.
So, let me just refresh myself, we, we were given one over two minus x.
Yeah.
We did some. Wait, what was the question, center that a equal one?
Everything that we did past the first red box.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is extra.
Yeah, no, no, I, it was still one over two minus x, right, and we're trying to find the summation thingy. We're find, trying to find the.
The power function, power series.
It's probably good to understand, depending on where you send, you can, by, depending on where you center your series. You can have a, you can have an infinitely, I guess, because it's centered anywhere, an infinitely many series, all centered. Like, the, the, in. Values of a that all add up to the same amount, because it's, they all represent the same function.
Uh, but would they add up to the same amount, same, like, if you need, like, I guess not, that's interesting. Ew. So that's what you guys are trying to figure out?
We're trying, well, well, yeah, we'll figure that at the end, let, let's do the last, we have, I have one last thing here from, one last question from Horace's lectures. Um, and then, yeah, we'll move on to other stuff after that, so, the last one is. Um, express as a, were they supposed to find i for this last one? Yeah, I was, was to find the interval of convergence for this last one, so let's find that quickly, what's the interval of convergence? Uh, well, uh, x minus one, the absolute value of x minus one has to be less than one. So x minus one has to be between that and that, so that x has to be between zero and two. And that's the answer. Yeah. So that's the interval of convergence, oh, sorry, then we also have to check the endpoints, moving on too fast, so let's check the endpoints. Um. Oh no, we don't have to check the endpoints, because we're using the definition backwards here, yeah, so the definition is that it has to be less than, less than one. Not less than or equal to, less than one, so we don't have to check the endpoints, because we know it has to be less than, it won't be, equal to won't converge. So, yeah, okay, now, last question from Horace's lectures. Express as a power function centered, power series centered at zero and find i. So our thing. Is one over one minus four x squared, that's our function, so express as a power series and find the interval of convergence. Well, it's already nicely set up for us, we can just write this as the sum, n goes from zero to infinity of four x squared to the n. Um, that's it, four x squared to the n, yep, and what's the interval of convergence for this? Well, first of all, I'll just write this a little nicer, so this is going to be n equals zero, so it's gonna be four to the n x to the two n. And the interval of convergence is when this is between negative one and one, in other words, between negative a quarter and. A quarter, take the square root of everything. We get a complex number here, so we have the absolute value of x is less than one, square root of one over four, which is. A half. And that means that x has to be between a half, negative a half, I mean, and a half. So our interval of convergence will include a half and a half, did that a lot, did that pretty fast, so tell me if there's. Um, any questions? And it'll actually be exactly that, not inclusive either, because again, we're using the rule backwards, so not inclusive.
Wait, what? Say that last part again with the whole not inclusive stuff?
Uh, because.
We found the radius of convergence.
Yeah, by definition, we don't have to worry about the endpoints here, because we're using the fact that this is true only if. R, the absolute value of r is less than one, not less than or equal to one, less than one. Since we know that has to be true, we don't have to worry about the endpoints, the endpoints won't work, because again, has to be less than one, not less than, equal to one.
But when, if it's less than one, wouldn't half work?
Uh, the r has to be less than one.
Oh.
This is an r, this is x, this is the, the bounds on x. R is four x squared. R is four x squared. It's r.
Okay.
So what values of x make that between negative one and one, which is equivalent to saying the absolute value of r is less than one? Well, it's this process to get to that. Right, and then we don't care about the endpoints, because it can't be the endpoints, definitely not the.
Oh wait, we were given, we found r, and then it's not less than or e, it's not less than one. So we try to make it in that form to find the actual radius of convergence, but because we know that.
Well, we don't know that it's not less than one, it could be, depends on what x is, right, r.
Yeah.
Is four x squared.
So that's what we're trying to find, is it?
We're trying to find what values of x make this less than one.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, the absolute value of this, less than one.
Yeah, yeah, this is it.
Which is this, right here.
Yeah, and then because of what now, it's not in the, in the included?
This one here?
No, yeah, no, because of the la- the, trying to understand this last part again with the negative half and a half, not inclusive, like, oh, um, or.
Yeah, because, because the rule is, is that this. This converges to one, a over one minus r converges, or, I, I'm not saying it right, so let me, let me write it first and then. A r to the n, A r to the n converges to a over one minus r if the absolute value of r is less than one. Equal to one will never work, that's not less than or equal to one, it's just less than one. Right, so we just say, well, absolute value of r less than one, so four x squared is between negative one and one. Use the process here to find that x has to be between negative a half and a half, and we don't include the outside, because if it was the outside, like, the, the, you know.
It would have been more, it would, it wouldn't have been, okay, it wouldn't have been.
It would be one, r would be one in that case, if you chose a half or negative a half, r would be one.
That makes sense, yeah.
Don't worry, don't worry.
I get it, right?
Okay, guys, well, I'll take a little bit of a break, I know we're already eight thirty, I'm going till nine o'clock, we'll take a, like, you know, um, how about I just say? Still wanna do some questions after. I do, let's see.
Five minutes?
Okay, sure, let's just take, let's have, let's, let's take a seven minute break.
I was gonna say seven.
Let's take a seven minute break, and uh, we will continue right after, so thirty, uh, at thirty. I'll say thirty eight, because I don't know when the question was, when we started, I mean, what, how far into the minute we are, so, there you go. Okay, so I'll be back at eight thirty eight to do some more work, but this is everything from Horace's lectures, so after this, we'll just be doing some other questions. And, yeah, okay, so back in a little bit.
So. How is everyone?
Okay, everybody. I am back. Hello, there we go. Uh, is everybody here still?
Uh, my noodles won't warm.
What'd you say? What?
My noodles, this is taking too long.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Yeah, you made it, you made it, you made it back. Good.
All my noodles though.
No, they won't be here. Okay, never mind. Um, so let's, I was gonna, okay, let's, let's finish. Oh, my headphones doing the thing again. Why, why right now? Hold on. Is it gonna? Turn back on. Perfect timing, I'd say. If I do what I did before, before I plugged them in. And then they turned back on. Maybe it's just the amount of time that passes. Maybe if I turn them off and turn them back on again. Oh, I think that's what it is. Can someone say something? Yes, good. We're good. I think I just have to turn them off and turn them back on again. Okay, I'll figure that out for next time. Anyways, let's keep going here. Um, am I still recording? Yes, I am. Good. Okay, so. Uh, let's keep going here for, I was gonna write a list of everything that we need to be able to do. For this test. So what, what do we have to be able to do for? What do we need to be able to do for this test? Okay, well, I would say first thing is turn, uh, find. The radius and the interval of convergence of convergence. Um, find the radius and interval of convergence, uh, of a power series. Right? Uh, and then find. A power series. Representation. For, uh, a function. In the form. Uh, A over one minus R. Right? And a, a note here is that it can be centered. At, um, X equals A for some A. Uh, so I, I'll, I'll say this is, um. Okay, X equals C, cause it's not the same A here. Right? So for some value. Of some real number, it's centered at that amount. Um, and that's, that's it, that's it. That's, you know, we just do that, find the ratio, you know, do the ratio test. Uh, check the edges, you know, check the, um, the, not the edges, but the bounds. So let me write a note here quickly. How do you do this? Well, you do the ratio test usually. Uh, to find, to find the condition. Shin, oh, do the ratio test, okay. It'll give you some result L. L has to be less than one, right? And then check the endpoints. Check the. The endpoints. Right? Um, and I think that's it. That's what we're supposed to be able to do. I mean, of course, and also understand like what a power series is. Which is why I talked about at the beginning, but generally, I mean, if you can do this, you can, you know, somewhat understand what a power series is. Um, and yeah, so. To carry on, I mean, does anybody have a particular question for me or a question from the textbook? This is actually the third textbook I was looking.
I got one from my prof that said this is like a good question.
Sure, yeah. Maybe could you put it in the chat? Or is it in the textbook? Is it in the textbook or?
It's not in the textbook. He, I think it's something he just made up. Um, I could read it out.
Okay. No, no, you just, you can read it out if you, if it's, yeah.
Uh, it is two to the N. Uh, times N factorial. Uh, squared, so like N factorial in brackets squared. Uh, over two N factorial, so two, two N in brackets factorial.
Like that.
And X minus one to the N.
Okay. And it goes from zero to infinity and then X minus one to the N. Like that?
And it's like find radius and interval.
Okay, let's give it a try. Um, well, there's a lot going on here, of course, but I think we'll be able to just go by our normal. Route. Yep, I think it'll be okay. So if I just say, well, we're just gonna do the ratio test. Right? So it, we need the limit as N goes to infinity of, okay, so two to the N plus one. Over N plus one factorial squared. Over two N plus two factorial, X minus, um. Yeah, uh, and here should be X minus one to the N plus one. Times two N factorial. Two to the N. N factorial squared. X minus one to the N. So. I'm going to change things in here a little bit. Right? So, okay, first, I guess I can cancel some things right about, so two to the N cancels with two to the N. X minus one to the N cancels with X minus one to the N. So I have the absolute value of X minus one. Times the limit as N goes to, uh, two times that actually, two times X minus one, the absolute value of X minus one. Times the limit as N goes to infinity. Of, okay, N plus one factorial squared, which is gonna be N plus one squared. N factorial squared. Over two N plus two. Times two N plus one, times two N factorial. Times two N factorial over N factorial squared. Get a bunch of stuff cancelling here now. That all cancels. And we're left with, uh, something relatively simple. So two times the absolute value of X minus one. Times the limit as N goes to infinity of N squared, dot, dot, dot. Over four N squared, dot, dot, dot. So we get that this is equal to two X minus one, that limit evaluates to a quarter. Yep.
Is it, so is it, um, just the quarter that is the, like, between zero and, uh, and less than one? Or is it everything including the X?
No, everything, everything. The whole result. So this is the result we got. Right?
Okay.
That has to be less than one.
Okay.
Because a quarter, if, if I just say a quarter is less than one, that doesn't give us any kind of bound on X, right? X has to be part of that.
Yeah.
So the absolute value of X minus one is less than, uh, sorry, over two. Is less than one. So the absolute value of X minus one is less than two. So X minus one is between two and negative two, or negative two and two. Add one to everything, so negative one. To three. So our radius of convergence is two. Right? Because I can go from this center point to in either direction. Uh, is that right? Hold on. Yes, that is right. From that center point, X minus one. To either, in either direction, our radius is two, so R equals two. And our interval of convergence now is going to be negative one to three, but do we include negative one or three? We go back up to the series and we figure that out. So, uh, I'll just copy and paste this, cause I don't want to write it again. So if I say. Uh, I'll say, um, for X equals negative one, this would be negative one. Which would be negative two there. Should be negative one to the N times two to the N. So this will simplify to, uh, the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of two to the N plus one. N factorial squared over two N factorial, and there's an alternating part in the front here. Now we have to determine, does this converge? Or diverge? Well, I can't tell if it's, yeah, someone's gonna say something?
Is it, would it be two N? How is it two to the N plus one?
Uh, oh, sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, you're right. It would be two to the, two N.
Yeah.
Two to the two N, yeah. It would be two to the two N. Um, so now does this converge or diverge? Well, I can't really tell. If this is increasing or decreasing.
Oh, uh, he's, according to him, this is, like, according to my, to CPW, apparently this is increasing.
This is increasing. Well, I wouldn't be able to tell either way, so I can't use that fact, right? But okay, it's increasing, so we can't.
That's what, he just said it's increasing and you can say it's divergent.
Um. Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't know why. I guess he's saying, cause the limit doesn't approach zero. So.
Well, I guess we can do this. One way to check if something's increasing is to say that is. Uh, N squared over two N factorial, for what values of, for what values of N is this true? That this is less than two to the two N plus two. Well, this is gonna be impossible to solve, so. Uh, maybe not impossible, actually, but. Let's see. So N factorial squared, sorry, N plus one. Factorial squared over two N plus two factorial. Right? If the next entry is bigger than the last entry, then it's increasing. So, uh, we have to show for, is this true for all N or for N greater than something or, you know, when is this true? So two N factorial greater than, okay, well, this is two, two to the two N. Times two squared. This is N plus one, oops, write a little bit nicer, N plus one fact, squared. N factorial squared. Over two N plus two, times two N plus one, times two N factorial. Now. This cancels. This cancels, this cancels. So we're, uh, it's just one there? Okay. When is this? That's a four. N plus one squared over two. And, uh, sorry, two N plus two times two N plus one. When is this true? For what values of N? This is doable. Uh, so this is going to be, uh, four N, well, do it in more steps, two N plus two. Two N plus one. Four N plus one, I'll just, I'll foil that now. So N squared plus two N plus one. Uh, so four N squared plus eight N plus four. And this over here is four N squared plus two N plus six N plus two. Sorry, plus four N. Two times, yeah. Da, 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 yep. So this is gonna be six N, we did this question with that same polynomial before. Four N squared plus eight N plus four. Four N squares cancel. Uh, the, so this will become, uh, subtract six N from both sides. So it's going to be two greater than two N plus four. Uh, divide everything by two, one is greater than N plus two, subtract two from both sides. Yeah, subtract two from both sides is going to be negative one, it's less than N. So N is greater than negative one. Therefore. Increasing.
The way he kind of explained it in lecture is basically to go up to the, where you have the full equation.
Yeah, uh, up here?
Same way we do, yeah, the same way we do, um, like polynomials, where we say it's like. Uh, like the highest degree, uh, X, you know, like you, if you have, um. uh, X, you know, like, if you have, um, how to express, because, because the, you have a factorial on the top that's squared, it's to a higher power than the factorial on the bottom, and therefore you can say that the top is increasing faster than the bottom is.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's sort of how he explained it.
Yep.
Um, this way works fine as well, you just sort of like skipped this whole.
Yeah.
Just did that instead.
Yeah, that makes sense too, numerator is bigger than denominator, numerator increases faster than denominator, of course, we can't take a derivative of factorial, but we can still just say that the top is increasing faster than the bottom.
Wait, 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 so did you guys wait, because of the square, but did you guys like, t- take out the, do the whole factorial thing and then made the polynomials? Now, what did you guys?
If you think about it like this, of, if you square a factorial, let's say you have a really big number and you take the factorial limit. If you square a very large number, that number's most likely larger than the, than the factorial of twice of, of N, like, N, N factorial squared is N factorial times N factorial, which is gonna be bigger than
Two N factorial.
Like, two, two, two.
Well, because two X is, like, if, in general, and you, you compare that to X squared, right, if you graph it, that's, hopefully, it's gonna look right, I mean, of course it will, but, right, if I just have some value two X, and I have X squared, after some point, X squared is significantly larger regardless of X. Right, and of course, we're going to infinity, so, you know, we care about after this point, so, instead of X, you have X factorial. Uh, it's not really X factorial, but we can try to see if X factorial will work, yeah, it won't work, nevermind, uh, because it's trying to graph something else, but that's, that's the idea, is that this, just like here, X squared increases faster than X, than two X.
Yeah, yeah.
So, N si- N, N factorial squared increases faster than two N factorial.
Yeah, I get that, but what were you guys doing down here with the two N comparison to the?
This, this is to, this is to check
If it's increasing?
If increasing.
And you guys did that by going by plus one?
Yeah, is, is AN smaller than AN plus one? AN, AN plus one.
And if it is, it would be increasing, yeah.
If it is, which it is, for all N greater than one, sorry, greater than negative one, therefore it's increasing, since it's increasing, therefore, um.
Is it, is that inconclusive?
Uh, not inconclusive, no, no, it, it's just, uh, it would be inconclus- ooh, no, 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 it would be inconclusive. Yeah, nevermind.
Why is it inconclusive? What's happening?
Um.
Yeah, but like, what I noticed with the props is that you don't really have to show it's increasing, like, you don't have to prove it. You just have to say, since, um, this is true, it's increasing.
That's true, but, I mean.
Well, you have to prove it to yourself.
But how do you get, how do you even get to that conclusion, right? How do you even get to that?
Only kind of prove it's probably important.
It, it is definitely.
You have to know, we just have to know, so that logic, that the square logic, that's kind of enough, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's a general thing you can use for most, um, fractions, if it's.
Yeah.
Those are the things that we need to learn.
If you have anything that's the same on both, on both the top and the bottom, and one of them's squared, it's just going to be in, it's an exponential, it's just gonna be increasing faster than
Yeah.
Uh, the, the bottom, it's just.
So, whoa, whoa, what are you here, are we?
Well, this is increasing, so inconclusive, we don't know if this is increasing or decreasing, so I have to do ratio test again, I should've just done that to begin with, honestly. Um, I have to do ratio test again.
No, 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 he, if it's increasing, the limit doesn't approach zero.
Um.
It's not a negative one, oh, no, it's a negative one, that's right.
Uh, the limit, do, well, do we know what the limit approach is? I don't know, I can't tell by looking.
If the top is increasing faster than the bottom, the terms never approach zero, right?
They always diverge.
You'll, you'll never get to a very small number, because the top is always larger than the bottom. You get one point.
Oh, okay, okay. Limit isn't zero, okay, sure, so, by.
Then what's the whole point of saying that, if you get, if it's increased, what's the whole point of it saying that it's increasing, it's inconclusive then?
Yeah, there was no point, there was no point in saying it's incon- increasing. That didn't help us here.
It has to be, um, decreasing in order to in order to, to fulfill AST. And we just feel that it's not increasing, or it's not decreasing, it's increasing.
Um then we get inconclusive from it. From the whole test, we get inconclusive. If it's not increasing. I mean, if it's, sorry, if it's not decreasing, we get inconclusive, so we can't.
We can just do divergence test and see if it's divergent.
Uh, then we have, if we do divergence test, then we have to include this negative one to the infinity.
Oh, I think she means only on the absolute value, right, but then again, that only.
But we can't do that.
Either are divergent or inconclusive.
No, no, I mean the whole thing.
Yeah, I don't know how to deal with that, that's gonna be a.
We can say that because it's incon- because we know that the top, the numerator is larger than the denominator, that the limit is not zero. Because you're gonna get a larger infinity or a smaller infinity.
Of this, right?
Yeah.
But.
And that's part of the, it's part of the alternating series test, and if that one fails, then you know it's divergent.
Uh, but, but since it's not decreasing, I think the whole alternating series test is, we can't use it, since it's not decreasing, it's just inconclusive, that's all we get from an alternating series test.
Okay, but then if we apply the divergence test, we can still end up.
If, sure, if we just say that the, yeah, okay, if, if we say that this is not zero, okay, it's not zero, I see why, like, this is, yeah, we're not gonna get zero because of the N, the N factorial squared, and the thing here is, it's just not zero, so therefore, uh, this, does this affect it? I mean, it affects it, but does this uh, make anything not zero? No, because we're alternating between.
Well, it doesn't make it zero, so according to the divergence test, it's.
Do we know for a fact it doesn't make it zero?
Negative one to the power of infinity, is that zero?
It's not zero, no, but does, do we know that that doesn't make the whole s- limit zero? I don't know.
Because it's alternating, right?
If that's not zero, it can make the whole limit zero.
Uh, well, it could, if, like, one over N, that limits zero, that, that's limit zero, that's not, that's not zero, but if that was in there, we would, it would be zero, right? We'd have, I mean, not necessarily, but, you know, like, there's things like that. But, okay, just.
I'm going off of what my problem.
Well, if you're talking infinity.
By, by reasoning by reasoning limited, uh, fails divergence test.
I really should've probably pushed him on explaining that, all he said was, it's increasing. So it's divergent, it is, it doesn't approach zero.
Not, not to be racist, but Chang, uh, Chang Ping Wang and, uh, what's it called? Who, 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 what's the name from last semester?
I don't know who you're gonna.
I don't know who you're touching.
Well, something?
Char, yeah, Charles Kim, they have ways of solving these things that are like common sense in hindsight, but it doesn't really make sense when they're trying to explain it, but they, like, it's just like, some next level of math thinking to like get to that point.
I mean, I under- I understand him saying, oh, well, because this is, the top numerator is squared and the denominator isn't squared, so it must be, it can't get to zero, because the top is always gonna be bigger than the bottom, that at least makes sense to me.
Ee, but then, then there's people like Horowitz that are a little bit more rigorous with their thing.
Yeah.
And then they get almost identical.
But wait, but wait, wouldn't the tops being, great, like um, more than the denominator make it, no, no, nevermind, I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah, you're thinking upside down, you're thinking upside down.
Yeah, I was thinking upside down.
Whoops.
Man, this is the culture, always end with a question like this.
So what do we do here, are we, are we looking to?
Oh, we can check the other endpoint.
We just, we have to check the other endpoint now, yeah, we know this endpoint isn't included, what was, endpoint was it? Negative one.
That was.
Negative one.
So for, for X equals, for three, we have to check three now.
Oh, three, yeah.
Three, yeah, because our thing was a little bit more complicated. Sorry, the one note keeps screwing up. Um, okay.
Let's do this.
So for X equals three, let me just make sure that that's what we're looking for, three, yeah, so, um, well, I'm gonna just put this in as three, so that's two to the N, which is two to the two N here, and now we just have to check if this diverges, um, same reason, diverges.
Same reason.
By, by the same reasoning.
That's a previous reasoning.
Yeah.
I can see the discomfort on Adam's.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's true.
I'm not sat- don't worry, I'm not satisfied with the answer.
Yeah, fails divergence test, diver- gins test, therefore diverges. Therefore, I equals, uh, negative one to three, if we're centered at, or we're centered at one, so, uh, R equals two.
Oh, I figured, I think it's because, it's not because the series is in, is like, it's not the series, it's the sequence itself is increasing.
Yeah.
Not as, not as a sequence, just as a sequence, the sequence is, is increasing, and I think that was like a really old.
Well, this, this last one's not increasing, because it's switching between positive and negative.
I think he's talking with the N factorial squared over the two N factorial.
Yeah, that, that, this down here, this is, this is increasing.
Yeah.
This is not increasing up here, though, by that reasoning, it's, it's going up, it's positive, negative, positive, negative, it's flipping back and forth, right?
Yeah, that one, for that one, he just says the sequence is, like, he said the sequence is increasing, so, it can't, it can't approach a value, because it's always increasing, I don't know, for the, for the negative one, he literally just said, okay, it's increasing, so it can't be, uh, conversion. And this was a review question, so I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
When was this review? It was the Monday?
Oh, I get.
Like, before the main lecture, as like, hey, you should, we should review this question.
Yeah.
For the mini test.
I, I, I kind of see the logic here, though, because if we have this series, oh, someone's echo, big echo. If we have some kind of series here, it's like, okay, two, what was it, two to the N, N factorial squared over two N factorial. And it's an alternating series, so if I have, you know, the number line here, then let's just say, okay, it's increasing, that means the next term, this is increasing. So let's say, for example, it's like this, right, it's going up, if it's alternating, then it's just gonna look like, uh, oops, it's gonna look like this, right? That is not the, that's diverging.
Dabbing and reversed.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just, it's just like it's just not gonna converge, there's just, there's no way that's, that's gonna converge onto anything, right? So that's the logic, whatever that height is, is two N N factorial squared over two N factorial. But that doesn't really matter, it's just that if you look at it, it's just not, it's just not gonna converge.
Yeah, I think that's a good explanation, actually, it's like, if you just thought about if you had to actually just write out the value, you'd see that they're just getting more separated.
Yeah, so this, this is increasing. But if that's increasing.
This upside is increasing.
Oh, sorry, wait, that is, yeah, that is increasing, sorry, that is increasing, yeah. Since that's increasing.
I'm scared that he thought this was review.
Yeah.
He's like, yeah.
That's why I was, wanted to bring it up, is because he said this was a review question, and I wanted to make sure people knew that this was a review question.
Yeah.
In case he like looked at the mini test, I was like, oh. He like looked at it head, so I was like, oh, uh.
Better do some, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I see. Well. Okay.
Charles did this last, last year, I mean, last semester, with the, with his, the, uh, reviews before.
Yeah. Okay, guys, well, that's gonna be everything for today, that'll be the last question for today, uh, but I'm here for a few more minutes for any more questions, if people have any. Um, and yeah, thank you for that question.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
What was your COVID test?
Oh, it was positive, I had COVID. I had, today is the last day of my quarantine, so I'm feeling, I'm feeling okay.
I did not know this.
I got tested as well, and I got negative.
Oh, really? Good.
Feels bad.
Yeah, yeah.
What?
Adam, why are you feeling, man?
I'm okay now, I had, I had, I was, this is the last day of quarantine, although my mom is feeling a little bit sick now, so we have to wait a little bit longer before we're actually out of quarantine.
That's so meta, that means when I, when we heard you like, be sick, but like, while doing these.
Last week?
That means you was COVID.
I was, I had COVID last week, I was really sick last week.
Well, you didn't sound tutu, like, bad.
Yeah.
It sounded fine.
Mine was.